We're going to begin the meeting at 7 with petition number 960, Joseph Podolski, at 49 Carver Street. Do you want to read that? Thank you, please.
The Halifax zoning board of deals will hold a public hearing on Monday, December 13th, which is a while ago, at 7:45 in the Sleffens Meeting Room at Halifax Town Hall, 49 Plymouth Street, Halifax, on the application by Joseph Podolski for a special permit to construct a pole barn over 884 square feet, a special permit for welding in a business zone to be located in a proposed commercial building to be located at 49 Carver Street, Halifax. The said property is owned by John A. Braddock Boggs, Elmer L. Braddock and Joseph Podolski of 270 Franklin Street, Halifax, as shown on assessor's map 71 Lot 11, Book 5, 4, 3, 1, 3, page 258. The applicant is proposing to construct a 7,490 square foot commercial building with 1,950 square feet of covered storage for welding requiring a special permit under Halifax zoning by law on section 167.7 for welding in a business zone. The applicant is also seeking a special permit under Halifax zoning by law, section 167.12, F4, to construct a 2,000 square foot pole barn with 1,500 square feet of covered storage to the area's own business, and it's petition number 960.
For the record, Eric Dias, registered professional engineer with Strong Point Engineering. He has made an appointment with Joseph Podolski for this project. This is our third time before you. The letter, we were initially here back, I think, in December, per the notice, we determined that we needed to go for site plan review with the planning board. We did that. We came back, the project went through some improvements during that time, which we went over at the last meeting that we were here for in March. Following the site plan review and just before the last meeting in March, the building inspector issued a memo stating that rather than needing a special permit for a pole barn in excess of 884 square feet, he felt that we needed a special permit for a pole barn which exceeds 20 or 25% of the livable floor area of the primary residence. So that kind of threw us into a bit of an administrative snafu in that that required a separate application that had not been advertised yet. So following that meeting, we came back, we submitted to your office, your office advertised for another hearing, and here we are. So right now, there are technically two applications and three special permit requests in front of you. The first application had two special permit requests, one being for the welding use, the other being for the pole barn that exceeds 884. My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that per the building inspector's last letter, we can scrap the special permit for the 884 and replace that with the new special permit for a pole barn exceeding 20, I think it's 25% of the livable floor area. So nothing has changed on the plan since the last time we were here. The only thing that changed is this little red cloud on the cover sheet that identifies what special permits that we need. That's it. The design, the geometry of the site, the drainage, the building, nothing has changed. The last time we were here as well, there were some questions about what the pole barn would ultimately look like. So we actually engaged Dennis Schwartz's office out of Toppin, and I'm going to pass these around if that's okay. And I'm sure we can get one of these into the record when we're done, to develop these renderings of what the pole barn will look like. These are renderings based on the proposed landscape. If you look at these, you can see the berm behind the building. And I even have one for the record. Yeah, right, it's on top, showing that's showing what this will look like on the landscape. And we really, you know, with the colors and everything that we use, it really blends in well, and I think it gives a softer approach than what it might look like in this, you know, bird's eye rendering here. So really, that's where we are. The other things that we talked about the last time we were here is that we have to go to the conservation commission and the board of health. We put conservation commission tomorrow night, or the health is a week from Wednesday. There is a lean-to on both sides. The one on the edge, you're looking at it, the left side is 1,000 square feet, the one on the other side is 500.
The pole barn is strictly personal use, no storage of commercial products or?
Yeah, it's not. Some toys that they need to store somewhere if you don't have the reins on them.
Anybody got a question?
Plumbing materials and stuff for it stored in the other building.
Yeah, what is the square footage of the dwelling?
The dwelling unit over here?
Yep.
No, you're the first person who's actually asked that question. Joe, do you know the square footage?
1492.
1492, so just up to 1,500 square feet of the footprint of the dwelling unit over here.
That needs an addition too. That's on the deck.
So we'll see you again.
So you're going to have electricity in that pole barn?
Yeah, well, it might help then.
And when you're going to have water or anything like that?
I don't believe the plan is providing water.
But you're going to have water in the bigger building?
Well, water in the bigger building, yes, absolutely.
Trying to figure out what's different from the last one. But you mentioned the special permits, so there's special permits you've asked for that you're not asking for that, based on that letter.
We're trying to determine the same thing that you are.
So I actually asked the building inspector when we were doing our zoning meeting for our bylaws.
Yeah, well, you had one.
We did. And he said that he wanted to make sure that he had himself covered because it's half and half.
Yeah, yeah.
And he thought better of it after, like, they were originally told because it was commercial.
Because I remember us having this conversation.
Yeah, and so he said that he thought maybe because it was not all one use, that he wanted to err on the side of caution, which I understand. I mean, let's be realistic here, we've had some issues, let's err on the side of caution. And so that's what he said was the difference in the 25% versus the original 880.
Okay, yeah.
So I think that's, he was just trying to err on the side of caution where you have two different use groups.
Yeah.
And I think that's why the replacement. Do you know the distance from your delineation between use groups to the edge of that pole barn?
From here to here?
Yeah.
I do not, but I can approximate.
Okay. Because we've seen this before, that it's like a 50-foot?
It's about 80 feet from the corner to the actual orientation. It's about 80 feet.
So the pole, the pole barn's going to sit on the same property as where the house is?
They're actually set with properties, it's going to sit on the same property that the commercial building is on. But your definition of an accessory structure, this is where this comes back to, says it's an accessory structure either on the lot or an adjacent lot under the same ownership as the primary structure. So that's where he came back to making, I think, part of what informed his change apart, was that definition of accessory structure.
Yeah, pole barn is on the residential portion of the?
It is on the residential portion, that's correct.
And the rest of it is on industrial?
The rest of it is on industrial, on the second. That's right.
Do you actually own that piece of property, or you fathered us?
I mentioned that last time. We actually own it together through a corporation, so I...
When I give over, it's going to be his.
I think when you backtrack through the LLCs, they ultimately come to the same people, that's how that comes.
Seems like this is getting there.
So you're, so what, I'm just trying to be, so, that's true, actually, I didn't really read that, because that's right. So you're asking for two special permits?
Two special permits.
The first one is for the barn, because it's greater than 25% of the residential structure on the adjacent lot.
That's correct.
And then you're asking for a special permit for the light industrial use in a commercial building?
Yes, the welding component specifically.
Right.
By trade there, welders, welding requires the special permit.
Right.
And it was better for them to separate them into two as well, because that way we could approve one and not, like, it just gave them more flexibility.
I think that's right. I think, this is very clear.
We tried to work our way around separating them at the last meeting, but we determined we couldn't do it because it needs to be advertised.
Yeah.
Also, at the zoning committee meeting, the ones online are not up to date, so we need to have an actual copy in here that's up to date.
Upstairs we do.
Yeah, the zoning bylaws that are online are not up to date.
What's, what's missing?
I think there's a 2016 amendment that needs to be added into them, so that's something that we were discussing and was supposed to be in, like, behind the scenes happening, but we definitely need a hard copy here because these are old.
Yeah. I mean, a lot of the stuff we use is old.
I know.
I think this stuff is like original from the thing. So I guess the questions are, how much of that, so that's a big building, I think, this is, so it's still, we're still kind of asking the same questions we did in the original hearing, right? Which are, so the building is 7,000 square feet?
The building is almost 9,000 square feet. From the original application, this building actually got a little bit bigger because we determined that we needed to sprinkle the building. In order to make room for those water controls, we added a bay to the building, and the bay's coming basically 25-foot increments.
Added a bay on the backside?
Added a bay on the backside. We held the front location and shifted the building this way, so nothing encroached closer to the street or any neighbors, anything like that. The only thing it really effectively does is takes the open space area and pushes it further back into the site.
So the only open space area is on the back of the building?
It's on the backside of the building, back here, and up here is the police station.
Yeah. You said kind of the welding is not in the whole place, right?
No, the welding will occupy, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, the bigger portion back here?
Yes, the rarest part.
The rarest part in the open space, this portion here will be leased out as contractor base. For light uses, whatever's allowed in the neighborhood, obviously, or else I'll have to come back for a special permit from you folks.
So now, so the building is 9,000 square feet, now it's, it's an increase from what we saw last time?
Yes, before it was just shy of 7,500, now it's just shy of 9,000.
What's the square footage of the welding shop?
Square footage of the welding shop is 46 by 65, which is math I can't do off the top of my head. Forty is about 4,000 square.
So, and that's the same space that you had originally applied?
That's the same space that we had originally applied. It's this portion, the thinner portion, that's a little bit longer.
Yeah, I just, because?
2990.
Yeah, just because the building is bigger, I want to be clear, if this, if it's going to prove that what you advertised is for the use of the same amount of space that you originally applied.
Yes.
Yeah. So the welding space, which is use of the square footage a second ago, is similar to what?
2990.
Yeah, so what's that similar to in town, that's what I don't know. I mean?
Was it similar?
2990 square feet.
29.
Commercial space that big? I don't know yet.
What's your farm stand?
It's like less than half of the ride.
Next door to it.
I think that was 3,000, was that 3,000?
I think it's probably close to that, yeah.
3,000 square feet.
It's not really that big. No, it's not that big. There is a pole barn approved on the lot right here, it's 6,500 square feet, so that would be twice the size of the welding barn that's going over here, just to put it in the scale perspective. So it's really a pretty modest operation, but it gives these guys a home base somewhere to work on.
And I like it on the backside.
The size is allowed by it right anyways.
Sounds, you know, size is allowed by it.
There was a question way back when about operating outside the, your space. Are you staying within your space, or do you intend to have welding outside?
We occasionally would do something in the covered over area on the very rear of the building.
So it'll be in the backside?
The backside, okay.
Yes.
Which did move even further back, as we talked about, from the street.
So then there won't be no noise for the neighbors?
Not a bit more of a noise, but I'm going to see it either.
I think that's 250 feet up the street.
And it's dipped down too, like, I drive past, it's dipped.
And the other thing to note too, is it's a little hard to see from this perspective, but this here, these dots that you see on the plan, there's a row of green giant arboritees, and they're situated up on top of a berm along the street, so the berm is five feet, these things grow to be, they grow two feet a year, they're going to be at least 12 feet tall in short time, you know what I mean? So it'll be a good screen there, you won't see this from the street, other than right through the opening here, which is the nearest.
I think you've changed the driveway entrance tube to accommodate some of the residents?
We did. Originally, it came straight out.
Yeah.
And what we determined, what we found was that the headlights would be shining basically right in these folks' front window. We didn't like that so much, and I'm sure they didn't like it either, so we goosenecked it and brought it out, so that at the very least, our headlights coming out are shining their driveway. We even looked at putting it on this side of the building, and one, it made the traffic patterns just unbearable, and two, it just shined in somebody else's front window. So we compromised, I think, and tried to do the best that we could and make everybody satisfied.
Can I ask a question?
Hold on a second, sir. Any more questions on the board?
Is there hours that you're planning on having it open?
Our typical hours are, we usually work 7 to 4, 7 to 5, sometimes we get later, but not, our typical hours are 7 to 5.
And we may, sorry if I'm asking the same question to you, I was, are there going to be people coming in and coming out, or are they just dropping stuff off? Like, how is the?
We, we work out of the shop to get, yeah, we do get some deliveries, but usually only one, maybe two a week.
Okay. So it's not going to be a lot of traffic?
No, we're not a large company.
So if we put stipulations that are like 6 to 6, that would be for traffic coming in and out and business operations?
Well, I also, so the problem with stipulations is I don't like the idea of a gentleman, but like, I, I also have a company, I do snowplowing, so I might go there at night to get something in the middle of the night and?
Yeah, the welding stuff is what we're talking about, like, I mean, it's a commercial zone, so it can be open. I think the concern is industrial, yeah, right, like, any noise or anything like that, I don't want to, you know, use your property, but?
Yeah. No, I wouldn't work, you know, if I get material or something like that to leave, you know, sometimes I eat parts for something, want to fix it to one of the walls, exactly.
I mean, doing the school commerce.
People could probably do that on their own property across the street, too. Yeah. Is there going to be a lot of lighting put in the parking lot?
No, there's not. In fact, what we proposed, I think I have a sheet here, actually, I do, look at that. What we proposed is just backlighting on the building itself, just to light up the immediate area, no pole lights, so nothing that's going to be sticking up high over the trees of the arboritees. And you can see from the plan, it's, you can't see from where you are, but if you zoom in, we're at zero foot handles all along the property lines. So everything is shielded, pointed down, and just going right, right onto the immediate areas around the building, and that's it.
I feel like it was pretty well thought out.
Yeah, it is very well.
Personal fund of, fund of people? Anybody in the audience want to?
Yeah, I have a question about, two questions, actually. The driveway, I noticed you said that it has changed, but it's, the lights are coming directly into our kitchen.
Basically into the?
Whether you turn, it's going to go one way? And also, the driveway itself, I've noticed the last couple of days, the rock stuff, is it considered as rock or stone or what?
Temporary.
It's temporary?
That driveway location is not the actual location.
Do you want to address the driveway?
I can, certainly. The location of the driveway that's there today is just a temporary construction, I think. So that's not the final location of the driveway. It's actually, if you look at the plan, that's more over here, and the driveway is ultimately going to be shifted this way, okay?
You mean further west on 16?
Further east.
East, that's it.
Further east, so east is that way.
Yeah.
So it's going to be shifted a little bit further east, so that that way, and I believe you folks live right across the street here. If you look at this plan, you'll see right here, the survey crew actually picked up your driveway. So what we did originally, this driveway was positioned here, so that when the lights came out, they were pointing right at your house. We shifted it further east, so that now, at least when the lights are coming out, if anybody's waiting there, it's pointed at the driveway. Certainly, if they make a turn, the lights are going to shine on the house, unfortunately, there's not a whole lot that we can do about that, but anybody who's queued there for any length of time, waiting to come out, isn't at least pointing at your kitchen window, they're pointing at your driveway.
Yeah, basically, it's like coming right at our front door right now, and dining room is in the front there, and the living room next to it, so when cars, even cars, not even trucks, when they have cars there, and it comes across, whether in the living room, it's like you get blinded by?
Well, hopefully, at night, we don't have any cars coming out.
Yeah, and I think once they get our approval, they can kind of start moving stuff as they're supposed to.
Are you, are you doing anything with the rocks? The reason I'm asking is I noticed trucks going by today were flipping the stones up in the air.
Those rocks are put there so the trucks, when they, when they're going out of the yard, they don't attract the dirt onto the, onto the asphalt. So the dirt stays, yeah, that's, that's just temporary.
That's going to be?
That's just temporary.
So we paved, the purpose, we actually call it a tire scrubber. So the purpose is that, and they're the size that they are, they're angular rocks, so they don't get in the joints and scrape the dirt off, so the dirt doesn't track on the street.
Yeah, with the way some of the big trucks come down that street, like, rocks, perhaps?
When it's all, when it's all done, it will be, it will be a paved driveway.
Okay, okay. It seems like, to me, it seems like it's going good. I mean, I don't have a problem with it right now, as it stands, so, of course, they're doing the same, so.
Any other questions from the audience? Mr. Baguena?
Would it be a stipulation listed as far as shielding the lights in the neighborhood, or is it because if it's proposed, and any deviation from what's proposed, would you have to?
Would you be able to shield the lights coming off the building, so they won't reflect on the, on the houses?
And how much of the driveway is moved over as far as the gooseneck? How much further east is the driveway as compared to what the present one is, if it's , they're shining right in the living room?
15, 20?
I'd say at least 20.
I just measured, it's, it's almost 40.
Oh, okay.
Is it going to go to the present berm that's there?
Just about, yes.
Just about to?
Just about over that. So it'll be almost centered on the white post of the fence, like, where the mulch piles are between the driveway? That'll be almost a center of it.
Would have been nice if you just put the driveway going into the mulch.
Right now, it's, it's under construction, so there's a lot of things that are going to happen, by the time it's finished, it will be?
Yeah.
Any other questions from the, on the board, from the audience? Anybody from the board? Anybody want to make a motion?
So just for the sake of the argument, so the pole barn itself is more than 25%, which is the limit, right? What's, what is the need for that to go over 25% of the original residence?
It's really a personal need, just for what they have and what they need to store in there, you know, to go over that 25% wouldn't be enough. I mean, 25% of 1,500 is what, that's 500, a little bit less than 500 square feet. It's a very small pole barn, it just wouldn't serve their needs at all.
And what's the, just, and I mean, if that was the case, the bylaw wouldn't exist. So, what's the use of it? Is there, I think you had already asked, there's electricity or water? Is there a primary use that they're going to use it for, or is it, it's not a business use, right?
No, not a business use, personal storage, personal storage. Mr. Podolski has some motorcycles, things like that, skid steer for his snowplow business, stuff like that, might be stored in the lean-to, or might park a truck under the lean-to, but just personal use, that's it.
And is there, it doesn't look like there's a separate, I don't know, I'm trying to remember, because I think stuff has changed there. Is there a separation between the two lots? Are there trees there, or are there, is it open now?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty well open. There is some grade work that you'll see here, so this is our infiltration base, and we'll grade down, we grade back up, and then it actually grades up a little bit more. So this whole area that you see here is lower compared to the police station that's up here, and even the building that's on this side. So it's recessed into the ground a bit.
And it looks like, if that's the house on the right-hand side of the adjacent lot, it looks like it's behind the?
It is further back, yes.
Do you want to put a separation between the?
I'm going to plant trees in between along the property line now. We just finished this weekend cutting down all the overall pine trees.
No, between, between the pole barn and, you have built a big building, the business building.
This is actually this location here that you see that has nothing shown in it, is where my septic system's going, which is why we haven't proposed any landscaping in this location here.
That's going to be grassed, though.
Yeah, it's going to be just grassed in that location.
I mean, the truth of the matter is, so the pole barn is related, is a special permit related to the ownership of the same lot next to it. So whatever you want to do to separate it, it's got to up to you.
Yes.
And the, and the commercial building and the pole barn are on the same lot, so to separate that stuff doesn't, doesn't seem like a requirement, it seems like, you know, it affects you, so.
Want to make a motion?
Do we want any conditions?
Yeah, I mean, what do you think of reasonable, so I think the?
Reasonable hours?
Yeah, the concern is not your use of the building, like, you're, you're being able to go get stuff at night, I think the concern is the, from the bylaw, right? And the welding use, I think, is the concern on the effect of the neighbor, so noise or light or something like that.
I think the concern is outside work.
Yeah, right, so I guess?
Is there, is there a town noise ordinance that we reference that?
Yes, but no, it's about enjoying personal property.
Yeah, and the, kind of the question on whether or not to grant a special permit for light industrial use is, is centered on the effect of the neighboring law. So I mean, I guess the question is not?
So we're talking about exterior?
A limit to you even being in there. I think the question is a limit to, to the effect on the neighbors around you. Is there a time?
I love that, too.
Yeah, right, right. So is there, is there a reasonable time limit? Is there a reasonable expectation?
Like, 6 p.m. to be fine for the, anything exterior?
Yeah, like, I think it, don't you think?
Seven to seven.
Yeah.
I mean, people start at 7 o'clock.
That is outside work.
Inside, it's, you're in a building, you're quiet.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think a reasonable expectation would be a condition that, you know?
Yeah, that's?
Neighbors will not hear the effects of, or experience effects of the welding before 6:00 in the morning and after 7:00 at night.
Yeah, so 7:00 P. to 6:00 A., no, no outside work.
That's reasonable.
Yeah, okay. And maybe that the lights, I mean, you kind of already presented that the lights aren't going to affect?
Yeah.
As long, as long as they're not reflecting on the, out on the street or into people's houses.
Which I think you're planning not to anyway.
Yeah, right, you look at the foot handles right along the property line here, like, point one, which is nothing on the, on the property line, so you won't see any casts across the street. In fact, we don't even make it to lighting up the pole barn.
Yeah, so the condition, maybe that's the case for the lighting, doesn't affect, you know, the street and the neighbors?
Are you saying that it'd be operating at 6:00?
There wouldn't be?
That's very early in the morning for, I mean, it's residential.
It's commercial block.
Yeah, but it wasn't, we have a residential lot, and we're the ones that are going to hear the noise all the time.
So we could, you want to do a 7 to 2, 7 to 6?
250, 300 feet off the road, behind the building?
The only, we'll start with, would be at the very, very rear, if, to give you a relation, is where the lodge piles we're working in today, that's where we're talking about. And it'll be behind the building, in enclosed area on either side of this. It's very?
It'll be the furthest, furthest away from the street, that's what they?
I'm not going to have them working at this end of?
No, no, not close to the street, all the way out back.
Trucks going in and out of the lake in there.
That's what this gentleman's showing, that's where they're going to be working, and inside the building, and...
Ninety-five percent of our work is interior work.
You just feel like a big piece here or there.
Yeah, it's a very small portion would be doing that area anyways.
Well, anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve petition 960.
And with some stipulations?
With stipulations for outdoor work between 7:00 AM, or, outdoor work is only allotted between 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM.
Can we make it so that the effects of welding, that there's, I want to have the effects of the neighbors are between 6:00 and 6:00, or something like that? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Does that sound right?
Yeah, that makes sense.
I don't want to say that you can't do stuff, I just don't want them to be able to.
Yeah, that makes sense.
No jackhammering all back on.
The police are right behind you, they don't hear any of that. Fireworks in the street and they don't hear.
All right, we have a...
So what are the hours that...
I thought it was 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, or 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM?
I think they're looking at six.
Six.
Six to six.
I think it's a very rare case that they're going to be welding anything outdoors at 6:00 AM.
Yeah, I think it sounds, and tell me if I'm wrong, it sounds a pretty likely case that even if they were in there at 6:00, you wouldn't know it.
Yes.
Right?
I mean, if you're going to go there, start at 6:00 o'clock, you're at least a half hour before you even start doing any work.
Yes.
So it'll be...
Sadly, yes.
I mean, it doesn't sound like there's going to be a lot of people coming in and out of there anyhow.
No.
Yeah.
There's... How many employees do you have?
Right now, we have four.
Okay, you say four boys.
What's going to happen when the other parts will be stopped? Is that going to have a separate issue?
So to answer your question, if they have, if they have a use in that commercial building that requires a special permit, they'll have to come ask for that. Otherwise, then we...
Yeah, they'll have to come in front of the board. We have a motion, anybody second it?
Second.
So what do we have for conditions? Sorry?
Six to six.
Six to six.
Six to six.
Welding effects on neighbors, do we do a light condition?
On the exterior portion.
Yeah.
On the exterior portion, yes.
And then you want to do a light condition?
I mean, he's got it all.
Yeah, I mean, if he's got the light down, as long as there's no light shining into the neighborhood, so everything is going down, that should be fine.
Okay, I'll second.
Tina?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
And myself, yes, passes five to zero. Do we have to vote on the other pole barn?
It hasn't gotten too expensive at this point. I know what's going on.
I think we voted on the petition, so I think we approved it, right?
Do we have to vote on...
Separate application?
Yes.
Great.
On the second, we have to vote on the second, right? The pole barn?
Is it still 960?
I don't know if they changed the number of it.
Oh, they did that? Okay.
It should be. 965.
Uh-huh, 965, okay.
I guess our second motion would be to approve the pole barn, petition number 965.
965. You don't need to write that down.
Go ahead.
Tell everybody enough. The Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 11, 2022, at 7:05 PM, in the Board of Selectmen's Meeting Room at Halifax Town Hall, on the application by Joseph Bogerski for a special permit to construct a pole barn to be located at 49 Carver Street, Halifax, Mass., 02338. Said property is owned by Don A. Braddock, Elmer L. Braddock, and Joseph M. Bogerski of 270 Franklin Street, Halifax, as shown on Assessors' Map 71, Lot 11, Book 54313, Page 258. The applicant is seeking a special permit to construct a 2,000-square-foot pole barn with 1,500 square feet of covered storage, which exceeds 25% of floor area of the livable ground area, ground floor area of the principal building, in accordance with the Town of Halifax zoning bylaws, Section 167.3, definitions, and 167.12E, density regulations of specific uses, areas on business, petition number 965.
All right, we already went over this. Anybody have any questions?
No livable area, right?
No.
Just for storing your own personal equipment?
Yes.
And no lights, no, just going to be no running water?
Yeah, we have lights inside.
You're going to have...
You have to work it down.
You're going to have lights and...
Well, it's a good thing.
And just for storage, for your own personal stuff?
Yes.
And... You want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve petition number 965, this pole barn.
Any conditions?
Personal use only?
Yeah, personal use only.
Second it?
Second.
As a mayor.
Tina?
Yes.
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 I'd just like to add, there's other buildings of this size within the area across the street, there's going to be one next door, so there's other buildings, it fits within the...
Within the catch of the neighborhood?
I'm a yes.
Myself, yes. I pass a five to zero.
We'll miss you guys.
Cutbacks on her.
Make it look good.
Things like that, just sit up here and answer questions.
I've seen them every month since.
He's gone from building, every time I go on, he's saying, it's going up, it's going up.
Turn his wife right there.
We have 710 petition for...
Would you guys be okay if I opened them and do it?
Deborah Trotta.
Yeah.
But we're going to...
The Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 11, 2022, at 7:10 PM, in the Board of Selectmen's Meeting Room at Halifax Town Hall, 499 Plymouth Street, on the application by Deborah Trotta for a special permit and variance to build a deck to be located at 51 Paradise Lane, Halifax. Said property is owned by Deborah L. Trotta of 51 Paradise Lane, Halifax, as shown on Assessors' Map 53, Lot 11, titled on Book 52844, Page 80. The applicant is seeking to construct a 42-by-8-foot deck on the back of the existing home, which would violate Halifax zoning bylaw, Section 167.8C, requiring a set of special permit for an extension of a nonconforming use as well as a variance for the rear yard setback from 43 to 21.57 feet, in accordance with Halifax zoning bylaw, Section 167.11, Table of Dimensional and Density Regulations, Area of Zone Residential, and petition number 964.
Okay, what would you like to do?
We'd like to put the deck on the back of the house. The problem that we ran into is the colored septic is located on the backside of the house. So the new septic is on the edge of Paradise Lane. What we wanted to originally do is pull the house 10 feet from the water, but what happened was is it has to be 20 feet, the septic has to be 20 feet from the house. We weren't able to pull the house any closer to the septic, so which...
It's a lot of movement.
Which, yes, which turned out to, you know, kind of negate the deck for us. Our feeling is, there's not much of a backyard where there's growth, there's, my feeling, our feeling is, we have a big family, when they're here, they're in the backyard. Now, now everybody's trampling on all of the vegetation that's protecting the hill on the back to get out of the water, because there's not that much. Having the deck would make it easier for us just to be able to entertain our guests on the back, off the back of the house.
It's a significant drop to the look, it's not just a street runs to the lake. It comes out, I believe, nineteen and a half feet, and then straight down one of these...
So the water, there's no beach, there's no nothing.
Yeah.
So...
There would be a second-floor deck, not a first-floor.
On the second, you're going to have the deck on the second floor.
It's a second floor, correct.
Because the new section of the house, it has a walkout basement, or I guess, the way that the...
There's a doorway out.
There's a doorway out to the basement.
Coming into the house is the first floor, from the back of the house is the second floor. It's not something built on the ground, it's whole. And I only leave this two feet of it in crochet. The existing...
This is not...
Yeah.
This is not... 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 This is not what I was expecting, that might be the one I was looking for, okay, all right.
Good, too.
Okay, all right, okay. That looks familiar. Okay, yeah. Proposed deck, okay.
Twenty, 25.
Oh, yeah, it does drop way off, huh?
It drops way down. So there's really, I mean, it's not a...
It's always going to look loose.
Okay, yeah.
25-foot buffer.
Yeah.
So you're four inches.
Originally, we wanted 10 feet off the roof from...
I don't care, four inches, people have...
No, exactly.
It's 10 feet, how far is it now?
No, so it's 42 across the house, and then only eight back on.
It looks as though you're within the, like you're back from the buffer.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's tough with all the wetlands around here.
Well, they're improving the septic system anyhow. There it is, it's coming away from the lake anyhow, it's going to the river. For the things, that's a huge improvement, yeah. So the house is going to stay on the same footprint?
It is.
It's actually a little smaller.
Just the deck is going to, you need a variance for the deck.
Yes.
So the house is only 33 feet off the property line now?
Right.
Right.
This is another neighbor who sold it to us.
You're rebuilding the house, you said? And that can't be pulled forward?
No, 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 we're not rebuilding, we're building a whole brand-new house.
You're tearing it down?
Originally, we wanted to rebuild the home.
You're going to tear the house down and start up on the same footprint?
Same footprint.
Existing foundation, or...
With a foundation, yes.
With a new foundation?
This has no foundation.
So it can't be pulled forward, or because of the septic?
Because of the septic. We asked to pull it forward, but it has to be...
Posivation wanted, the next part of the...
Because then it's too far away from the septic.
Posivation said it had to be 20 feet, and it's exactly 20 feet from...
And you're not doing anything with the septic?
The septic, we're putting in a brand-new septic.
Whole brand-new system.
Instead of it being in the back of the house towards the water, it's now...
It's a separate one.
So that can't go forward, and then the house go forward?
It's as close to the street as we can get.
I think it's actually probably better for the lake that it got moved forward.
Yeah, it is. We're just looking for some kind of, you know, it's a small yard, we're just looking for some type of yard, and if we're up high, then we're not in all of the vegetation that's growing off that hill in the backyard.
Oh, there was the elevation, I think. There was the elevation, what do you have?
You kind of see it.
No, the house, what's the name of the back there? Not the house.
We actually know what the deck's going to look like.
It'd be a four-bedroom house.
You know, one is four-bedroom, someone's doing a two-bedroom.
We don't want any kids coming back.
That is a good way to keep them from coming back. There's no room here.
They got a bit of room in the office, that's it.
That's your friend.
How do you get away with it? The variance on the deck.
I mean, I suppose the only thing would be approaching, really.
There's not much they can do, they can't go back this way. The length seems down, so there's no way of going forward on it. And the only difference is eight feet. Right now, it's 34. So by adding the eight feet, we're dropping it down to 20 feet.
For them, I think they have a topography issue that makes 100% sense. It actually, I think the deck, to her point, is going to help the environment. So I think they meet the hardship requirement for variance.
Yeah, agree.
And it seems to me like it makes sense to approve a special permit for that, because like they said, too, it's going to keep people out, it's going to protect the lake.
Everybody okay with it?
Yeah.
Anybody from the, Mr. Baghina?
Yeah, I think it was pretty clear as far as meeting the requirements, that the hardship, being a pre-existing, nonconforming lot, that the hardship would be certainly the topography and the size of the lot that's there. It's certainly, I don't feel, would be detrimental to the established character of the neighborhood. There's plenty of other houses on Paradise Lane that meet that requirement, and I myself personally don't see where it would deviate from the intent of the bylaw. So I think, in my opinion, it would meet the requirements that, like Peter said, you know, it's pretty easy-peasy. That's the technical term.
We like easy-peasy.
Put that in the record.
Yes.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept petition number 964.
I'll second the motion.
Tina?
Yes.
Yes.
Myself, okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Thank you.
Good luck.
You're going to have some nice sunsets now.
If they get started.
This is true.
You know, we're all set?
We're all set.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
See you all.
Thanks.
You know what was funny? We were just talking about that. Because we're living in Denver right now.
That's all right, my bylaws got taken out, so.
All right, well, thank you again, everyone.
Plow came in this year, direction, it's never come in before, just right across my lawn.
I've noticed, like I was out on 105, and I've noticed a couple of them got whacked in the last couple of weeks.
I think some of those storms, they just couldn't sink.
Yeah, I don't know if it was a plow or if it was intentional, but it is what it is, I guess.
Hey, you know.
It is what it is, put some steel in there, see what happens.
Yeah.
Another one, look at us today, getting it done.
She's in like a butter state.
Wow, it's like the old days, cha-ching, cha-ching.
Well, we have 966 for Ryan Walsh.
All right, the Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 11, 2022, at 7:15 PM, in the Board of Selectmen's Meeting Room at Halifax Town Hall, on the application by Ryan Walsh for a variance to construct an attached garage to be located at 207 Cranberry Drive, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Ryan Walsh, 207 Cranberry Drive, Halifax, as shown on Assessors' Map 60, Lot 585, Book 43899, Page 308. The applicant is seeking to construct a 24-by-30 attached garage with a master bedroom above, which requires a variance of the side yard setback from 30 feet to 20.3 feet, in accordance with the Town of Halifax zoning bylaw, Section 167.11, Table of Dimensional and Density Regulations, Area of Zone Residential, petition number 966.
Would you like to speak to your petition?
Hi, my name is T.J. Muddin, registered professional engineer, representing the owners, Ryan and Christina Walsh. Tonight, the property is located at two oh seven Cranberry Drive, it's in the residential zone, and the side yard setbacks are thirty feet. Currently, there's a split ranch that's sitting pretty much smack in the middle of the property. And the applicants are going to build a garage with a room above for their grown family. They're, they're from Portland, but they're in the house, so it's sometime when they can return their home. And that's appealing for them, and so. Also, another thing to note, currently, they have a three-bedroom home, but their septic system is already for, designed for a four-bedroom. So it won't be any additional requirements for the septic system. And the location of the addition is chosen through the topography, and then how tight the width of the lot comes from front to back. And they're putting it in the front because of the house' split ranch and the topography on the back.
Where's the septic on the front of the property, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's what I'm thirty-year-old septic vision.
Is this a go-away, that last video? So what about the topography is the issue?
Because it goes, well, so there are a couple of restrictions on the land property, existing septic system. So they cannot be, can't be attached to the front. For example, like the house across from this property, had it that way, but they can do it here, but it's too close to the septic. And the house is located, there's in the middle, whatever, and you add this addition, the garage, it's gonna require a variance from the side setback. And they propose to put it on the left side, which will require a much less difference had they put it on the other side.
I just pulled up a street view, if that helps at all.
It's just like really long and narrow.
Yeah.
It's narrow and it gets, it gets narrower as you go back, where the house just looks like it's halfway back, but it looks pretty narrow at that point.
The neighborhood next door has a two-car garage, if someone, property across is two-car garage, it's, it's fifty.
It fits with the neighborhood.
Yeah, most of those houses have the garages.
Looking at the plan, I don't see where you could put it, the septic's in the front. The lot gets narrow, you have the shed and the pool in the back, so you can't put it in the back.
There's a message from the board of health agents in the correspondence.
They're gonna have a little one over the ground.
Have you spoken to any of your neighbors?
Yeah, they all are fine.
To the left of you, there's another house there.
I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the key question here, so I guess if the, if the bylaw says you need to have thirty feet, why not just build a smaller addition to meet within the requirements of the bylaw? Why do you, I guess, why, so like, so I agree, I know that the neighborhood, there are cars, there are houses with two-car garages. I mean, arguably, you could move this behind the house, you'd have to take the deck off, right, or move the pool or whatever, like the above-ground pool or all that stuff. Or you could just make the addition smaller, like if people, and it's a difficult question. But, I mean, I guess everybody could have a lot size shaped however, but they could come in and wanna build, you know, a mansion that would be fifteen feet off the lot line, because they need that house, or they need that size or whatever, but the bylaws don't require it. So I'm struggling with, I guess, with this is, there is, there is space on the lot to put it. It's inconvenient, right, you can't put it up front. I don't, I don't know if it's supposed to go in front of the, front of the house anyway. It's not an accessory building, it's a garage, but, but you could put it in the back, there's space for that. Or you could just make it smaller, so I guess I, I, if, if I was living next door and I saw somebody encroaching on my lot line beyond where they were supposed to, and the argument was like topography, I'm not seeing where the lot on that side of the house is any different than other places behind the house. And I would wonder if I was next door, like, why are they allowed to do that, just because they want a two-car garage?
So if they did that in the back, they would have to expose to make, make the grade go down more. They would have to expose more of the existing foundation, that would make it less than, that would make it have less than four feet cover, which is against the building code.
Is it, because I'm looking at the, the topographical, it looks like it's all seventy-eight feet, right?
No, if you look at this one, it's very, it's quick. Is that not?
If you put it back.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe I'm not seeing it.
Yeah, but this, so this is gonna have a lower entrance, the garage, the elevations are not there on the surface plan. But if it was attached like here, that would have to come down and expose the existing foundation. Because this is a split ranch, this is not a two-story.
Yeah.
So most of the foundation is already buried, so it's only like three feet exposed.
Yeah.
You're getting close to the footing of the foundation, because you're digging it, you're going down.
So to still meet the first floor elevation and to have enough depth still to the bottom of the garage, garage slab, you'd have to dig in the back.
But to that point, isn't that, it's, it's not because of the land, it's because of the way the house is built.
The way the house is put on, the way the house is put on the property is giving you the hardship right now, so you can't.
Yes, to make it only is as is.
I mean, arguably too, I mean, you could put an accessory building, like a garage back there and have to drive it back, but that's inconvenient too. I mean, I guess, or you can just make that smaller.
Yeah.
And then it would fit within, and I, like, that's what I'm struggling with, I, like, I just.
It's not only garage, it's living area above also, correct?
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, they wanna use another bedroom.
And, like, I, I think it's important to ask those questions only because we just keep getting nailed with people pointing out bylaws and stuff to us, and I don't wanna.
Well, I don't think this is a, well, to be.
No, I get it, I, no, I get it, but like, what's the smallest a two-car garage can be? And it's, do you?
Or you get a one-car garage.
Right, that's kind of like, it's like, all right, it's, it's so far in between, because it's like, yeah, you want it, but.
Like, I know, like, I, but I, I, but then I would, if I wanted a three-car garage, it's the same, like, you know what I mean? I get it, like, I, I, I think our job is to ask those questions, so, you know?
Maybe onsite then?
Yeah, maybe, I mean, I, like. Am I wrong asking, like?
You're right in asking it, but I think also they're trying to give themselves more living space.
Yeah.
Instead of growing family, what have you, when, what else can they do? A one-car garage is probably not gonna do it for them. And it may not be worth the expense either. Exactly, if you have to bring everything down the back, then the cost would skyrocket on it, and you mustn't move. And you're moving a pool and this and that and everything else.
Sort of a hardship, isn't it?
And so this is, there's no engineering discipline, engineering is not required in the zoning application. But I am a friend of the applicants, we are friends, they're just, this is their home, I don't propose a hardship. And this is their home, they just wanna rest their family there, they have two kids. I don't want to be hurt, but Christine was the, my baby, he worked at home with like the fires, the EMTs.
Our fire department delivered my baby last evening, well, and I'm after.
Now, if they had more space, they wouldn't have been in the bathroom, it would've been upstairs.
The pool and deck would be all, all somewhere, we all go there. That's, that's just, they're just trying to make a better living situation.
Well, I think also the, the way the, even architecture with the house, this here would certainly be much better than having something in the back, trying to join the house, I don't even know how the roofline would, would match up to get it in there. And if they are exposing the foundation of the other house, then that brings more problems.
Right.
And I think you already mentioned, there's a lot of two-car garages in the neighborhood already.
Yes.
So it's not like they're gonna change something that isn't.
Those were put there when the, when the houses were built.
Were built, yeah.
That's, this is.
This one here, they just.
We're not against it, but we just have to make sure that, you know, the next neighbor doesn't come along and say, well, you know, I bought this house and I knew that I couldn't build something, but hey, I want to, so why can't I? So we just have to make sure we go through everything and.
And a lot of people second-guess everything that we say.
That's, yeah, that's the problem.
What do you think?
I mean, I think a site visit would definitely be helpful, because then we could kind of see how, how the neighborhood is.
The foundation.
What's on the other side here, are we pushing into something and makes it look silly?
We always see something different when we go and look at.
That's true, yeah.
The location itself, we can actually see the problems with the land and everything else on it.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
Do an onsite inspection?
How it would look if it got stuck in your backyard, you know?
Right.
You can go visit your, you know, the.
Do you mind?
You've already had the fire department there.
That's actually true, yeah, that probably lessened drew some of the recommend in your eyes.
We're not qualified to do anything.
No. Not by a long shot, that's for sure.
Do you wanna state where you're gonna put the garage? And we can go out there and look at it and see what we can think. And we can, you know, we'll do an onsite inspection.
Don't go into labor doing it though, because we don't wanna have a.
Oh, yeah. Full week, all right. Okay, well. Okay, when's our, when's our meeting?
The night of the election.
Oh, right, so.
It'll be the first Monday, May second.
Oh, okay, all right, so we're going.
Have a motion for an onsite?
I have an motion for an onsite visit.
Second.
You need a date and time, right?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, you guys' plans off with the vacation, if anybody's going away or not.
Usually they're right before the meeting, all right?
Which is another reason we're looking for more space.
We normally do it Saturday before. Which is, yeah. April thirty, Saturday morning, is that?
What day is it?
We don't have to go in the house, we just wanna see where the, where the thing is.
Video was ruined, nice show.
April thirtieth, what time, nine?
Nine, nine is fine.
Hopefully we have a soccer game then, but.
It's that time.
Soccer ball.
Getting into reality.
No softballs on Sundays.
We're unfortunately at five six AM, so.
Oh, really? Oh, yeah, you're right.
Not fans of sleep, so.
Oh, yay.
Coffee and doughnuts.
Exactly.
Coffee and doughnuts, you'll be ahead.
Oh, perfect. It's fine.
All right.
Tina, yes?
Yeah.
Yes. Peter?
Yes.
Yes.
Myself, yes. We'll see you then.
Thirty is at nine AM, just stake it out so we can see and get a good idea of like, why it would be best there.
Do you wanna continue the next meeting or just to the onsite?
Uh, to the next meeting, so it'll be May, I'm sorry, May second, seven oh five.
Yeah, I'll make a motion for petition nine sixty-six to continue it to our next meeting, May second at?
Seven oh five.
Seven oh five.
A second?
Second?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
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 Myself, yes.
Thank you.
Good luck with those four weeks. Yeah, we'll know.
You go to the minutes? You ready with the minutes of March fourteen? Any corrections, deletions or anything like that?
Yeah, right.
That was pretty quick.
Six minutes?
Minutes?
Well, actually, I can't phone this, yeah, I, I watch it on video, but I didn't, I was out for.
Tell them to you guys.
The March fourteen minutes, is that okay? Motion?
Yeah, somebody's gonna write, grab his answer, so.
I have a motion to approve them, I mean, we pretty much went over them by going through that first.
I wasn't the SO.
Who wants a second?
I'll sign it.
That's you, Bob.
I just made you.
Yeah, yes.
All right, we go to the March twenty, March second, executive session.
You just have to read that into record where it says.
What's that?
That these minutes will not be released, that little blur of after it. You just have to read that into record. On the agenda.
It's part of the motion?
Yeah, it's on the agenda. We don't do any executive stuff. Yeah, it's right, it's right in, I know, it's on the agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of March second to approve only, these minutes will not be released until disclosure no longer defeats the purpose of the executive session.
Second.
Somebody else will be all the time, that's easy.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, myself, yes.
No bills?
Oh, Matt Bills.
Okay, I got a, I got a, I got a problem today, a guy called up.
Oh.
On one hundred Lake Street, remember that?
Oh, yeah, the Doug's, is that where they were?
No, it was a building in front of another building.
Yeah, the same lot or something?
Yeah, and the, the guy is in there, he got at the place, he's replacing the roof, and he's replacing the windows. He came in front of us, and we told him that you have to apply.
Ah, yeah.
And now he's doing the work, and the new building inspector gave him a permit to put shingles on the house and to do windows. But he's, he's gone more, he's gone further than that. And I talked to the building inspector this, this afternoon, and he was, he's, he has a right to fix the roof. I said, okay, what about all the other work he's doing? What about the lot in the back, you know? And he goes, I'll get back to you. He hasn't got back, you know? I mean, I don't know, I don't know what.
Was he heading out to see what he was doing, maybe?
You know, I figured the guy would go over there, give him a cease and desist order, but he gave him a permit to do the roof, and he gave him a permit to do the windows. And the guy's been working inside the, the building.
Wasn't that the issue before, he started tearing floors out and beams and?
So where do we go from here?
We can invite the building inspector to May second.
But you ain't gonna do anything about it.
Hmm?
You ain't gonna do anything about it.
It'll be done by then. Be done by then.
And he?
He'll be done by then. By next to me. Can we ask, can we ask him to go out there and take a look at what's going on?
Well, we just did.
No, like formally, I mean, I know that.
But we just had a scenario like that and.
Yeah, I mean, you can't just keep letting them continue.
No. But that's his job, it's.
He said he was gonna go out there and look at it, and.
Did he hear your timeframe?
Yeah. He has, he went out there, and the guy across the street, McDonough, the guy that owns the ice cream shop, he's complaining left and right that this guy is doing work without.
Did he complain to the building inspector also?
Yeah, he came over here to complain to the building inspector. And I said, and I came and talked to the building inspector and. And I said, and I came and talked to the building inspector and.
No, with the zoning board?
What is, I'm just trying to understand, like, this guy came before us and we told him he couldn't build?
He came before us and we told him he has to apply and he never applied. Now he's doing the work.
What is, what is it that he has to apply for? I'm just trying to like, I feel like I'm so lost.
The building was, it's two parcels on it. One was the main house and the other one was, you know, he wanted to combine them both together.
I feel like I remember a little bit of this, but I'm trying to. No, just from watching.
Yeah, and the building, the building inspector gave him a permit to do the roof and the windows.
Didn't it say, didn't that go on Boyd Street?
No, it's on Lake Street.
The small garage turned into a, upstairs, a workshop. I thought it was cease and desists.
I mean.
And we went up on inspection.
His words are, he can do what he can do, it's his house, he can, you know, fix it, you know?
Well, he can't if it's too close to the water.
Yeah, he's got to be inside the house.
Uh, has anything been said to the building inspector in writing or is it just?
That's what I'm saying, can we formally ask?
You know, we, we just heard about it this morning, this afternoon.
So it's just had a verbal conversation?
Yeah, with a verbal conversation. You want to give him something in writing?
I think we should formally request that he go out there and see what's going on.
I think we should put what, what the complaints are in the letter and I think we should invite him to the next meeting to give us an update.
Have the guy show up in front of us.
Just go ahead and give us the update.
Do we have the official complaint still or not?
The, the neighbor across the street complained.
Okay.
And I went, I talked to the building inspector, he gave him a permit to do the roof, re-shingled the roof and he's been working there all winter long. He's been doing some, you know, something to the foundation and so we need to know what's going on, on that, on that property before we, you know, get ourselves into hot water.
Do you know what the address was of the neighbor?
100 Lake Street.
Of the neighbor?
No, it was a complainer. Was that the right way to say it?
The ice cream man?
Yeah.
McDonough.
McDonough, thank you.
Just send a letter, memo kind of.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, we can vote to invite him to our next meeting if you want.
Whatever you guys want.
I'll make a motion to send a letter forwarding that complaint and inviting him to our May 2nd meeting.
I believe Jerry and I are going to see him this week, don't we have the zoning? I think we have that on Wednesday.
We do, it's the 13th, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so we're going to see him on Wednesday.
But still, we'd still have to go.
Yeah, no, absolutely, absolutely, I'm just, maybe we can move it along and come up there quicker.
Definitely, yeah.
Oh, we need a second.
Second?
Yes. Yes.
Everybody else up, please. Five to zero.
No, can I ask a question? Because I don't really know how this works. Like, I'm trying so hard and we're poring through all the, all these things with the zoning bylaws. And this was just like a casual conversation on the soccer field with a member of the town who had asked me about a particular property that is being used with broken down cars, all sorts of stuff going on at the house that I guess has been complained about before. At some point, someone had gone out there, and I don't know if it's the current building inspector, the last building inspector, had told the guy to shut it down, you can't do that kind of work on your property. The guy cleaned up his property for a touch and now it's all back. So how does that, like, does this person who was speaking to me on the soccer field come in and file a complaint? Do they send an email? Like, how does that go about so that they can properly get that on the agenda?
Are they local?
They are local, but they've also indicated that they are a little bit, um, nervous about the neighbor.
Because people come pretty nasty.
Yeah, she said, you know this.
Especially on the soccer field.
Sometimes.
Hey, listen, I'm telling you.
What, what they should do is, is, you know, they should probably email the building inspector or call. Like typically, like in the past, I think what's, I think in the past what's happened is somebody's gotten out there, like, we just had a big, what's, what's happened, and I feel like in the last 10 years that I've been on the zoning board is like, we've never really been involved. So like the building inspector will go out, will give, they'll send a letter, sometimes they'll appeal to us and we don't really see it. In the last year or so, I'm a little worried that it's kind of learned behavior that if you, if you like, just say no and go forward with it, there are people who are going to back you up and say that you're going to do whatever the heck you want and it becomes a thing.
Huh? You're still on there?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
He doesn't care.
Who?
Building inspector.
No, I mean, I mean.
It's just.
And I, I feel like he's in a difficult position too, I mean, you know, but I, but what they should do is, is let him know and like, we can ask him about that too, I mean, you know, and, and like if I got something, I would forward it too.
On his property?
You're right.
On my way down.
You're right, there was. So I wonder if the, the call had been made.
Oh. I don't know, you guys know what it is.
Oh, I know, I know, he's right at the corner of my street. He's got, you know, probably about six cars on his property in certain. Last year, they, the police came down, they towed a few of them out of there, a couple out of the woods and.
Looking inside coming in?
Yeah, and he's got, they're registered, at least he has plates on them.
But not wheels?
Well, all I can tell you is there's plates on.
Are they dr buh?
Uh, no.
But there's plates.
The problem with this particular person is he starts projects.
Never finishes.
And he never finishes them, I mean, is.
We have one of those.
He had a bulldozer out the other night, uh, last year, and he was doing his backyard, and I just said, what do you have? Problem with the subject system? He's, no, I just want to level my, my backyard. So that, that lasted for the weekend. And then he started putting up a fence and that lasted.
Yeah, there's like three panels of.
Yeah, so everything is, everything is started, but nothing is finished, completed.
I get, listen, these things pop into my mind and they ever do anything, so at least he takes a couple steps. I say to myself, geez, I should really fix that board in the deck, it's been sitting there for a while.
He's got caution for it.
Kudos, I'm sure the neighbors aren't pumped.
He popped out of his driveway, everything else, it's just dirt now.
Wow, okay. Alright, yeah, I mean.
Like I said, it was just a soccer field conversation, but it was like, yeah, no.
Like, I guess if it was going to be, I would forward it to him, at least he got it from two different places and it wasn't just one person.
Yeah. I just, I understand, because houses are so expensive, you don't want to see this in your backyard, it's like.
He's been before the border selectmen too, they had him down in front of the border selectmen, you know, they were in the riot act and everything else, so.
I think every town has problems like that, because I know there was a house in Weymouth I was going to sell and the neighbor's house was just stacked. And the town had told them several times, you know, you can't go in there, all this other stuff, but it's like, what power do they really have on people's property? They can tell them and tell them, but it's just how some people live, I guess.
Different sets of expectations, I guess. What else do we have to do?
Bills?
Those never go away.
At least they're not mine today.
Comprehensive permit, you guys continued it?
Yes. Why don't they withdraw on that and then reapply when they're ready?
I think it's just keep going.
I think that they're going to do, they're going to withdraw the comprehensive permit and put some.
It's been over a year, it started.
The last meeting here in the actually happens January 20.
They were, they were up at the property this morning. They have the funds to do, to go through that.
They were going through conservation.
Now, the planning board, there's a set of drawings there for where you are. They're talking about a medical building and then also another auto, autopilot store?
Autopilot store.
Another one?
Yeah.
It's like pizza joints here.
At first I, I said they want to turn O'Reilly's 90 degrees.
Are they approving a lighted sign somewhere too, did I say?
There was one, a, a lighted sign too.
Yeah, the cigar shop or something.
Next to Dunk's?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right, next to Dunkin' Donuts.
But like, that's against the bylaw, right?
Yeah, and they're going against the planning board.
Well, the signs go through the planning board, right?
Yeah.
What do you have to get on?
They do not, it used to be the zoning board, now it's the planning board.
I think everybody in town drives past there, they don't really need a sign.
Why would they get a lighted sign and nobody else get that one? I don't understand.
Internal.
Internally lit sign.
I think it's the same as Dunkin' Donuts, they're proposing this similar sign. Like, done a similar way.
Well, no, so Dunkin' Donuts had put in for a sign a while back, right? And that was an externally lit sign, because I remember reading that, and now this one is an internally lit sign.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Any, any lighted sign has to go through the planning board or the selectman?
Yeah. You know, like, certain lighted signs are not allowed.
Like the digital sign that the town has?
That's not advertising, I don't think.
What's that?
Oh, because it's just telling about town events.
Yeah.
At the fire station that way.
Can you have that in the town?
Well, no, we better go after the fire department now.
This is like a, different type. Almost, yeah, like a. Alright, we, we going to approve these bills, is how you mean? Do I just, do you need a motion for, we just say motion to approve all the bills or?
Yeah, sure.
I'll make a motion to approve three Plumpton Health X Express bills, 13147, 146 and 148, a WB Mason bill and a Pitney Bowes bill.
Second.
Try to be as specific as I can in case. Yes.
Yes.
Alright, we talked town gossip, we talked soccer gossip, we talked building inspector gossip, what else we got? Good stuff. There's lots of hits on this video next month. We're going to get to 100 views, guys, here we go. That's it, man?
That's it. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, yeah.
Second?
Do we have to sign a wallpaper for the bills or?
Oh.
You have the bill folder, right?
I have nothing.
Oh, we got to sign the bills.
Oh, yeah.
Like, I have nothing on this one.
Good call, good call.
Sorry.
Good call.
Can't send a check out without signing it.
That's usually the case.
I've tried.
So just to go back, if we can, to 100 Lake Street, just still writing all the right. There's one complaint from a neighbor with the last name McDonough, across the street, I'll figure that address out.
Right, 100 Lake Street, what the complaint is?
And they're just complaining that he's doing extra work than he's allowed.
That's not been permitted back then.
He has to come front, you know?
He's had the same.
Just to see what's going on.
And he wants the instructors, or you want.
Yeah, they have to go out and. And report what is, what is going on.
He specifically came here and asked us what he would need to get.
Right. I mean, all winter long, he's been doing the work.
Just to have access to two buildings on the same lot.
Yeah.
So one more has to say.
It's like 10102, is that, or 108 or?
What's that?
10102 or 1018?
Lake Street.
Yeah, and 108 or 100, there's two numbers on it.
Or was it just a discussion?
He actually tried. It was after the 30 days from the denial letter, so we had to withdraw.
There we go.
Okay.
Let's go on.
I think it's party over, right?
Yeah. Yeah, the venue? Motion to adjourn, yeah.
Oh, yes, alright. Hey!